Don't let it be me.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, he should work good in that.
I call the Norton City Council Committee Work Session for Monday, April 15th, 2019 to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Karen.
Here.
Mr. Towesley.
Here.
Ms. Whipke.
Here.
Mr. Pilot.
Mr. Pilot's excused.
Mr. Kernan.
Here.
Okay, we move on to public comment. We have two tonight. Please come forward when your name is called. Give your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak on your topic. Michael Stack?
Can I speak when the matter is brought up by council?
During Committee of the Whole, you can, yes.
Would that be yes?
You can then, and you can now both if you'd like, but either way you want to do it. Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can I just elaborate? When council deliberates, when they're done deliberating, just simply raise your hand and then come up and you'll be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Towesley. Tanya Vanderveen?
I too wish to make the matters talked about.
All right, thank you. All right, under Committee of the Whole, Letter A, Wickard Insurance. Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, you want to do it that way. This is something we do every year. It's for our insurance for the city. At this time, we need to move it on to the special agenda to get started on it. So I motion to add Ordinance 462019 to tonight's special agenda with emergency language and looking to waive the second and third readings.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion regarding the Letter A, Wickard Insurance?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Whipke.
As I said earlier, this is something that we do every year, and our insurance will run out April 28th. And this is for a one-year contract, and it's for $98,447,000, which I believe is an increase of 5.4% over the last year's previous amount. But we do need to get this going so that we can have the city covered.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just want to say, if I would for the record, we got the information from Wickard Insurance just a day or two before we gave it to you guys. So it's not like we were sitting on it. But we would ask that readings get waived and gets passed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Towesley?
Yeah, I just would like to... It has gone up over 5%. Did we add anything, or are there any changes of significance?
It's basically the biggest part, Mr. Towesley, is inflation on property, buildings and the whatnot. They usually... They've averaged anywhere from 2% to 3.5% inflation in that. But Wickard did their due justice. They did their due diligence. They went out and shopped all of the various, and this is what they came back with.
Okay, thank you.
So what you're saying is our deductible, what the price of the building is on certain things?
Deductible stayed the same as McLean. It's just that, like, buildings went up by inflation, 2% to 3%.
Okay, did that...
The valuation of the buildings.
Okay.
And property.
Gotcha.
Any further discussions or comments? There's a motion in the second to add Ordinance Number 462019 to the special meeting for its first reading. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. All right, Letter B, ODOT Safety Project at Eastern and State Route 585. Mr. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to move forward to tonight's agenda for council meeting. Ordinance Number 472019, and first reading only. Do I need a motion then?
Okay, yeah, that's a motion. Okay, so there's a motion in the second to add Ordinance Number 472019 to tonight's special meeting, and the floor is open for discussion. Any questions or comments?
This was just the 585 project to make it safe, and it sounds to me like there's not a lot of liability to this for the city as far as financially unless something would be deemed unnecessary, and we bear 100% of the cost of the unnecessary, which I doubt that that's going to happen.
I would just like to also state, though, that ODOT did have a public meeting up at the community center a couple of weeks ago. It was open to the public, had open discussion and dialogue to many residents as well as people outside the area. They came with some interest, looking at the project to see what exactly was going to happen.
Okay. I do know, for years, this intersection has been a disaster. There's accidents there. There's fatalities there all the time. It's my understanding, if I'm recalling correctly, that this project is funded 100% by the state. They just need our consent to move forward with the project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to add that I am a little skeptical of their resolution, but something does need to be done. So I'm very supportive of something being done. But Mr. Fowler likes to speak as well.
Yes, Mr. Fowler.
And again, this is not the selection that maybe we would have made for the repair. But again, when you're not paying for it, you have very limited input. Now, they did take some of our public safety concerns regarding the closure, and they said that they would implement some of those concerns. So while, again, it's not the perfect solution, it's a solution that I am optimistic that it'll work to be successful.
Just so folks know, when are they planning on doing this project? Did they?
You know, I was hopeful that it was going to happen this summer, but I'm not certain with the budget uncertainty, even though with the increase in gas tax, I'm not sure that because it wasn't the 18 cents that they wanted, if this is one of the projects that'll be funded this year or next year.
Okay.
If I may, at the public meeting, I believe they said 2020, and they were specific that the road closures would happen after school was out.
Okay. So it was like summer of 2020, probably?
Correct.
Okay.
I was going to say something, and it just skipped my mind.
Any further comments regarding?
Oh, I know what I was going to say.
Mr. Towesley, go ahead.
When I was speaking to the engineer from ODOT, I kind of questioned with the R-cut, the expense of adding lanes, and why couldn't you just put a light in? And his claim was if they put a light in, they'd have to put in turning lanes anyhow, and the price would almost be a wash. So, just for public information.
Any further comment regarding Ordinance 472019? Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Letter C, Non-Bargaining Salary Rates. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we have three non-bargaining salary rate changes that we will be retroactive first of the year. We have the clerk of council, Carrie. When she first came in here, she didn't have her CMC certification. She received that now, so she will be going to the... Her salary that we told her she would be up to, $48,000. We have administrative assistant Shannon, which would be taking on more responsibility with the boards and commissions, and her salary will go up to $48,000. And we created a new position for Larry Hess, the service department manager, for management of the service department, and his new salary will be $61,000. So I guess, is there anyone who has any questions or concerns? Okay. With that, I'd like to add this to tonight's special meeting for its first reading only.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in the second to add Ordinance 482019 to tonight's special meeting for a first reading. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Whipke?
I'd just like to add that the administrative assistant has been actually taken on more duties at the rate she's been paid since even last year. So she's been taking care of all the boards and commissions for months now, as far as doing their minutes.
Anything further? Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Moving on to Letter D, Ordinance Number 492019. Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, this concerns four parcels to be rezoned from different zoning to I-1. I'd like to ask to motion to move this to tonight's special meeting for a first reading only.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in the second to add Ordinance Number 492019 to tonight's special meeting for a first reading only. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to add one thing, if I can, Mr. President.
Yes.
I personally... A lot of folks here are here for this specific reason. I think it's a mistake by council to move this to a special meeting tonight because it takes away one more meeting that these people could hear their voices. So I just want that to be known. I think we need to, due to what has happened previously at other meetings, particularly with this zoning, I personally think we need to give as much opportunity as we possibly can.
Any further discussion by council or administration? Mr. Stack? And we will keep the limit of five minutes.
So I just have a couple of questions. Is the city purchasing this property for business? Or is the business... You guys have a buyer in mind for this? If so, do we know what kind of business, what their operating hours are going to be? What kind of pollution, site sound, smells? What kind of roads are they going to have? I built my house with no industry. Now you're bringing industry to me. What are you going to do to protect the residents? Right now, you call for 100 feet. I'm asking for 200 feet from property lying to a 20-foot-high earth and mound with shrubbery and grass, and then at least 100 feet from there to the building. Nothing in that first 200 feet, just green space. I just, you know, I just want you guys to know that you're destroying my property value. I built a beautiful home, and it's going to be destroyed by it. So that's all I have for today.
Before you leave, I just want to clarify. You're asking for a total of 300 foot and mound?
Yes.
Thank you.
200 foot, it's only an extra 200 foot, a little bit of grass seed and some shrubbery. It's not that much, but it's the world to me. It provides a buffer for me. Nothing in that first 200 feet but green space. I don't think that's much at all. Protect the residents.
Thank you. Any further discussions regarding this item? Ms. Vanderveen?
Thank you for hearing me, Mr. President. I'm here today to voice my concern over this. Many of you have listened to me speak about it at the previous planning meetings that I attended. Did a little bit of homework, so forgive me if some of my numbers are wrong, but I have some statements to make and some questions to ask. In 2018, there were 132 ordinances presented to this council for passage. 110 of those were declared emergencies. In 2019, thus far, there have been 22 applications to rezone property in the city of Norton, all of which have been afforded through public hearings. Along with those statistics, I'm asking, why is this being declared an emergency? You may respond that the matter is time-sensitive, and to that, I reply that on 3/18, the work session meeting was canceled. On 4/1/19, the work session meeting was canceled due to a lack of agenda items. Clearly, based on the agenda listed today for 4/15/19, there are plenty of agenda items, that there are nine new items listed under introduction of new legislation. I respectfully ask you, Mr. President, along with other council members, if you believe that this is the best way to serve the residents of Norton. It is my contention, as well as others sitting here tonight, that declaring an emergency when there is not one is nothing more than the council's way to push their agenda through and avoiding having to listen to what the public has to say on the matter. In doing so, you are allowed to bypass all three public hearings. It is concerning over the city's lack of transparency, as you just evidenced by not answering Mr. Stack's question over what is the plan for this property. These decisions that you're going to make are going to directly affect my home and his home. It's going to affect our property value, our livelihood. It is very concerning that when I posed questions about this matter to the planning commission on 3/12/19 and 3/19/19, no one could answer any questions. In fact, I asked a lot of questions, and the response that I got each and every time was, "We don't know." I showed up again on 3/21/19 to further inquire on the matter, only to be told that I could not speak because the city had made a mistake and was not actually required to notify any of us by letter, even though I received one stating that I could appear to voice my opinion for or against the matter. I was told that I could not speak and that, quite frankly, I had said enough already. Your own agenda, as it stands today, is incorrect, as it lists parcel number 4601076 as needing to be rezoned. I was glad to hear Mr. Gaynor say that the manner in question is about four parcels. Your agenda says five. It is these small details that suggest to me that you are wishing to push this through quickly and not here with the residents, that this is going to affect how to say on the matter. Mr. Towesley, I thank you for voicing your opinion not to send this to work session because that would just further my opinion that you do not wish to hear what anyone has to say. Thank you.
Ma'am, before you sit down, I think there is a misunderstanding. For the rezoning, it is not emergency. I don't believe it can be emergency.
Your agenda states that it is.
The one I have in front of me does not. I don't know if it's different.
Was that updated today? Because your website agenda states that it was being declared as an emergency.
So the special... It does appear that the special council agenda does list as an emergency. The ordinance itself does not have emergency language in it. The charter prohibits council from passing a zoning change ordinance as an emergency. So there's no emergency language in that ordinance. It will go three reads.
When you said that, I looked at the legislation just to make sure that language wasn't in there, and it is not.
Yeah, it's cracked.
It's not in the legislation itself.
Special council agenda does have it incorrectly listed, though.
But it is listed incorrectly on your agenda.
It is on the agenda.
That's right.
And that's what I was going by.
Yeah. No, and that's fine. I get that.
Mr. Kernan, we're okay, and Mr. Towesley, if that's your pleasure, we're okay pulling it from the special council agenda for tonight for the first read, letting it go the full three reads, starting with the next regular council meeting. That is perfectly fine.
I don't have any problem with that myself, so.
I would appreciate that if we could do that.
Any?
Won't this be the first reading? You said go three readings. This would be the first.
It would be the first reading, but we're fine moving it to the next regular council meeting as opposed to addressing it at the special council meeting.
Which will be next week.
Which would be next week.
Right.
So I understand you correctly, the first reading would be next week.
Would be next week. Right. Were you finished, Ms. Vanderveen? Did you want any more time? Okay, anyone else have any other comments? All right, and did we have a motion in the second?
Yes, it needs to be amended.
So if whoever made the motion will amend that it will be placed on the first... For its first reading on the next regular council meeting.
Yes, I'll do that, I guess.
All right.
I'm accepted of the same.
All right, so we have an amended motion in second to place Ordinance 492019 for its first reading on the next regular council meeting, which will be next week. Is there any further discussion or comments regarding the legislation? Will the clerk call the roll? I'm sorry, Mr. Towesley?
I have one more, and it looks like she does, too. Is it my understanding that some of the questions that were asked will probably be answered in the next subject matter?
Yeah, yes. So my problem always is, is when we get a question, I don't... I hate to try and answer it without looking into it. So the clerk takes down everything. So she has taken down those questions, and we will hopefully be able to give those answers at the next public hearing. Okay?
And I would also accept a copy of your questions, if you have one for me, just to make sure.
All right. Anything else? Any other comments? Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Okay, Letter E, Purchase Metro Parks Property. Ms. Whipke, Ordinance Number 502019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion first and then talk. At this time, I'd like to motion to move Ordinance Number 502019 to tonight's special meeting for a first reading only.
I'll second that. I guess I have to because Scott's not here.
Thank you.
I hate it when he doesn't show up like that. Throws me all off. All right, so we have a motion in the second to move Ordinance 502019 to tonight's special meeting for a first reading. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President.
Whipke?
This is proposing that the city pay $1,260,000 for 137.48 acres. And this would be the property that you had inquired about, Mr. Stack, the park property. So yes, we are looking to purchase that at this time.
Any further discussion? Questions? Ms. Vanderveen? Yes, please. Give your name and address again. We got to go through all that stuff.
No problem. I didn't give it the first time.
That's okay.
Tony Vanderveen, 3004 Union Street, Norton.
Thank you.
This, too, is being declared as an emergency, and I'm wondering why. There's no emergency in my mind. And again, this allows you to do is to push this through without any discussion regarding our concerns over this project. And I'll add to that, that at the previous meetings that I have attended and spoken at, and unfortunately, council members, most of you were not there, I did voice, along with Mr. Stack voiced and other members that are sitting here tonight voiced, that we are not opposed to prosperity coming to the city of Norton. We are just looking to be protected so that our property is protected. And so I don't understand why this is... This needs to be an emergency. I need some help understanding why that is the case, especially since you just voted to move the first reading of the rezoning to the first... To next week's council meeting.
The rezoning is different from making a purchase. We could have emergency language here. Emergency language does not mean it won't go three readings to where you wouldn't have the opportunity to talk.
But it gives you the opportunity to bypass all three readings.
We always have that opportunity unless it's written.
I can clarify that. So there's two separate requirements under Charter and Ohio law. The first is that an ordinance has to be read on three separate occasions unless there's a motion from council, and that's just... That's more of a procedural matter for council. So they can choose to not read an ordinance three times. And then the second requirement is an emergency clause. The emergency clause allows the ordinance to go into immediate effect. There are separate requirements that they get confused a lot. But council can pass three readings with emergency, without emergency. They can go one reading with emergency, without emergency. Really, they're independent requirements. But I think the intention is to only do the first reading of this ordinance tonight.
Correct.
It is your intention, then, to have three full readings of this ordinance?
Three readings, yeah, of all...
With tonight being the first one?
Right.
Can you explain to me why it's an emergency?
The emergency language in this is because once the... At least in my mind. I can't speak for everybody else. But we want to effectuate the sale. Once the ordinance is passed, we want to move the sale along and effectuate the sale as soon as possible.
Which would suggest that you have a buyer in mind then to buy this property, correct?
I don't think that suggests that at all.
What an emergency language actually does is, like, whenever we pass it, the third reading, the mayor and the president signs that legislation that night. It is immediately into effect, so the purchase can move forward.
I'm asking, why is it an emergency? Why does emergency language have to be declared for the purchase of this land?
To effectuate... To finish the sale once we vote.
So the sale...
So that the contract can be completed.
So it's already in the works, you're telling me?
That's why we have it on the agenda.
That's... We have the contract with the parks is actually in the packet for everybody to read. And to be perfectly blunt about it, us purchasing that property gives us the ability to help you people have some of the things that you want or get closer to it than if we just let someone else come and purchase it, and they could literally do basically whatever the code allows them to do.
But my understanding from previous statements that had been made, I believe, by Mr. Markey on the 21st of March, was that really the zoning piece is where those things need to happen, not because of your purchase of the property?
That's the opposite of what I said.
Could you explain that?
Yeah, the zoning is the zoning. The zoning code applies citywide. What we talked about was some of the buffering issues, some of the things you're talking about, mounting, buffering, landscaping, light pollution, noise pollution. Those are issues that are addressed in the site plan. Goes before Plan Commission. Council has the ability to restrict by either deed or easement. There's a number of things that can be done. Any sale contract, if the city were to sell the property, could specify those requirements. So the zoning change doesn't necessarily apply to that, but the city can apply... Can put those requirements in later.
In the zoning piece or the purchasing piece?
In the selling piece.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The selling piece. I'm sorry, the selling piece. So the zoning... The zoning code is what it is. It's not going to be varied. So when the property gets rezoned, there's a set of requirements that apply to the property. I think what you're asking for is, in addition to what those requirements are for developing the property, you want some additional protections like mounding, setback requirements, and landscaping. That is done by development agreement, either the sale agreement of the property, a development agreement, an easement that the city can record on the property to restrict development in certain areas. That's not done in the zoning piece. It's not done in the purchasing piece. It'd be done once the city actually acquires the property.
In other words, we have to own it in order to restrict it, essentially?
Fair enough. Your explanation on March 21st led me to believe the exact opposite.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Towesley?
And this is for the administration. Do we have many commitments to this property? Because the risk is a big consideration in my mind.
We have no signed commitments.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Vanderveen?
Tony Vanderveen, 3004 Union Street, Norton. I read on your agenda with the information attached to this ordinance that you're looking to essentially finance the property. Is that correct? Am I understanding what I read correctly?
That is under Number F, is the note for a portion of it.
So I'll wait until Number F comes up because we're on E?
Yes.
Correct?
Yep, yep. Any further comments regarding Ordinance 502019? Yes, ma'am, come on up and give your name and address.
I'm Carolyn Novak, and I originally had the property that we're talking about.
Could you give your address, please?
112 Gale Street, Akron, Ohio. And my question is, what happens to all the animals in that land? You know, I was there Sunday, and there was wild turkeys. There's been deer. There's all... What happens to them? While you have your... Whatever you're going to do, your building or whatever.
I frankly don't know.
They move.
Yeah.
There's hardly any place for them to move anymore. Thank you.
Any further... Any further discussion? Comments? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Letter F, ordinance number 51, Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I motion to add ordinance 51, 2019, to tonight's special agenda with emergency language for a first reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance 51?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is looking to get a note for 800,000 to go towards the purchase of the park land.
For the discussions, comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Tousley.
I just gotta be honest, I need pretty much a thorough explanation how this works, because it doesn't exactly read in English to me, so.
Okay.
If somebody could expl.
All right.
Sure. So the, the ordinance, the, the idea is, there's the 1.26 million dollar purchase price, it's in the purchase contract, uh, the, the thought would be for the city to pay for that portion with cash on hand, and then the, the balance of that would be borrowed through this note. Well, a note is, when a, when a city government borrows in Ohio, they typically do it in one of two ways. One is a note, which is a short-term borrowing, usually up to a year, and the second is a bond, which is a long-term bor, borrowing. It's the same, it's the same type of debt, just one's short-term, one's fixed-rate, long-term financing. So what the note is, is allows you, typically a government goes to a note when they don't have fixed costs for a project yet. So, if, for example, in this project, uh, up to 800,000 dollars, finance the purchase, if we were to sell property in the future, we'd have money that we'd be able to apply to pay off the note. So that note will go for one year, uh, maturity, so say it's April 30th, I'm sorry, bad, bad date, May 30th, when you issue the note, May 30th, 2020, that note comes due, and it'll have a, a pretty low rate of interest, usually it's around, I would say it's around 2.5% right now for a one-year note. And when that note comes due, you either refinance it and borrow, re-b, re-borrow the money and at a different interest rate, or you can pay a portion of it down. So the thought would be, because the city's purchasing this land, if the city were to sell some land within that year, one-year period, and it gets some additional cash, it'd be able to pay down the note. So you're really advancing those costs that, for the cash we don't have on hand to buy the property, uh, ahead of time.
Okay, um, maybe you can help me to, section 10, um, no, section 11, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Letter C. It talks about.
Page nine.
Yeah, thank you. Talks about levying on all taxable property in the city. I just need some clarification on what.
Yeah, so all, all debt that's borrowed on a general obligation basis, which is the full faith and credit of the city, is theoretically debt that is borrowed within what they call the 10 mil limitation. This is, we're getting like way out in bottom-of-the-year land, but all property in Ohio is subject to a limitation of, it can't have more than 10 mils, mil, mil being the rate of property tax levy, uh, applied to the property. So this is saying, while this note's outstanding, that, that note, that note, let's say the city weren't going to come due, a note holder can, or wouldn't pay when it comes due, a note holder can go to court and say, "Court, you need to levy a property tax against the properties in Norton to pay."
Okay.
Debt service. So it's our, it's enforcing our covenant to repay this.
Right.
This debt. And I, I know the language is not, yeah, it's Greek, I, I agree.
Okay, thank you, that helps me.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Questions? Mr. Casey?
Joe Casey, 3141 Monary Drive. Who's securing the loan, or the bond?
It's, uh, if you want me to answer this.
Yes.
So the note is secured by the full faith and credit of the city of Norton, so the city itself is pledging its credit to repay the note.
Okay, but who's giving the 800,000 to give to the Metro Parks?
Oh, who's going to purchase it?
Yeah.
So Mr. Messner will go, we have a variety of banks we've worked with historically, Huntington National Bank, Key Bank, Fifth Third Bank, these are all banks that buy municipal debt. There's other national firms that do it, and he'll go and collect the best interest rate from those banks, and he'll say, "Hey, I need a note for 800,000, it's done all the time this way," and they'll come back with bids on their, the lowest interest rate.
So we don't have anybody in mind right now? We don't have no, no one confirmed?
No.
Working on it, but that's all.
You don't have an interest rate neither, do you?
I'm sorry.
You don't have an interest rate?
I've got one, it's, uh, about 3%, but it's just one, I'll probably get three or four more bids.
All right, thank you.
Ms. VanderVeen?
Tony VanderVeen, 3004 Union Street. So, I'm trying to wrap my head around what I just heard. You have no, you have nothing in the works currently today to pay Metro Parks the 800,000 dollars, correct? You haven't, you haven't done that piece yet, or you don't have it completed yet, is that accurate? Those funds do not exist right now to complete the purpose, the purchase of the land.
Well, I think, yeah, I think what Mr. Messner was saying is that he's still bidding that out to the various institutions.
So it might.
The answer is yes.
The answer is yes, you do not have it.
Correct.
So with that in mind, why would that be an emergency, then, to finalize the purchase when you don't even have the funds?
So I think there's always confusion about how we use the term emergency. It's not an emergency like the fire truck is going down the road and we have to do it quickly.
I understand that.
The reason for the emergency language is to effectuate and complete the contract, and be able to put signatures on contract. The emergency language for the note would be so that he has the legislation in place so that he can go out to the banks and say, "Look, I have a piece of legislation, now we want to finalize this." He can't really finalize anything until this council passes the legislation.
Correct.
They can't do anything until council approves this, if council approves this.
I understand that, but don't you, from my perspective, I feel like it's kind of putting the cart before the horse, because you're asking to be able to finalize the purchase, but you don't have everything in place yet to finalize the purchase. So why not just provide authorization to give him permission to secure the money to finalize the purchase?
Well, because we can't do that, they're not going to give us the note if we don't have the contract of the property.
I see.
It's, it's like, it's like buying a house, right? Same thing.
It's the opposite, actually.
It'll be done, so the, the timing of the note in the purchase agreement is if, once it goes to three reads of council determines to pass it.
Right.
With emergency language, they'll all close pretty quickly thereafter.
Okay.
So the note will be, the interest rate will be secured, the lender will be secured, we'll work with them in advance to get the documents done, and it will be done at that point.
So along with that, and again, I'm just, you know, learning about local legislation and how the rules work. Um, I forgot my thought. Can you repeat your comment for me, Mr. Markey?
Yeah, the, the purchase agreement and the note, they will, they'll be done simultaneously, and by the time we get to the point where both legislation, if they determine to pass them, we'll be ready, we'll have a lender lined up and an interest rate lined up. It's just a little too early in the process to have Mr. Messner have those interest rates. They're only good for a certain amount of time.
So is that an additional ordinance, then, since you don't have those concrete details right now?
No, the, the note ordinance authorizes the borrowing up to certain limits, and so that, it's already taking, it's already accounted for.
So it doesn't matter to council what interest rate Mr. Messner might get, as long as it falls within those guidelines? Is that accurate?
That's what the ordinance says, that's correct.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments?
Kristy Zantisca, 2818 Eastern Road. So what are the parameters that they must abide to on getting a loan? Because I would think that council would want to know what you're agreeing to okay before it happens. I know that when I go to a bank for the loan, and I go back to our business, the first thing that our board of directors wants to know is what interest rate are they offering? And what are the parameters, and what are the variables?
Yeah, so it's up to 800,000 dollars, and the note can be up to 8%, if it's less than 8% then that's permitted under the ordinance, but obviously, the note, or note rate's not going to be 8%, so we'll have those, we'll have those before the next council meeting.
But it could be up to 8%.
It's not going to be 8%.
But it could be, correct?
It's authorized in the ordinance.
Authorized. So what you're agreeing to as a council is the authorization of up to an 8% interest rate, which all of you know, I would hope, is not a good financial decision for any municipality at this point.
Well, I don't, I'm quite sure that when banks are bidding to give us 800,000 dollars, they're all going to be trying to give us the lowest interest rate.
They do bid, that's correct, but when they bid, they also look at the financial state of a community.
Yeah, I, I think our bond rating is pretty good.
The bond rating's excellent.
Yeah.
We have a double A-plus bond rating, it's the next to the best that you can have.
Okay.
So credit is not a problem for the city, plus debt is not a problem for the city. We have low debt, we have an excellent bond rating.
And aside from the fact that this does impact all of us as neighbors, um, I live across the street from the property, um, aside from that, this does affect the property taxes, and in general, the taxes that are money, because I have businesses that own property in Norton and are impacted by these tax rates and all of this funding that goes to purchases like this. So as a concerned business owner, I feel that the council should be very, um, they should consider the liability that they're taking on with not having a purchaser, which is what you've made clear to us, that there is no purchase agreement, there is no purchaser in the wings, that you're possibly going to incur the expenses, which I, I apologize if I missed it, I was stuck at work late, this is our busy season, um, but you're talking a property that has the possibility of some actual, um, some land, um, issues that could make it possibly unbuildable. Have we had those reports that have come back? And if I missed them?
Yep.
All of those testings came back and it is buildable?
Yep.
The whole entire piece?
No.
We're aware of, we're aware of the portion of the property that's unbuildable.
Can you explain how much that is? How many acres? Because you're incurring, you're purchasing a piece of land that's 1.2 million dollars, so how much is usable and how much is not?
I think it was a small percent.
I mean, we.
It was a very small percent.
No.
I, well, from what I've seen, yes.
You should make sure that you have documentation.
We do.
On how much of that land.
We do.
Okay, and I'm asking for it, but no one has that answer. I'm not trying to be rude or pomp, I'm just, these are things that I do with our business when we make major land purposes, purchases, because I will tell you that whoever's selling it wants it to look the best that it can. So I'm asking as a citizen and, and a business owner in town, that our tax dollars are going to be used for this, how many acres are actually buildable, and how many are not?
I, I'm guessing that that, we could come up with that for the next round, go?
We could.
Isn't that, we, it's not like, we don't know what you're going to ask when you step up to the podium.
So I, if, if we could for the next reading, have documentation, um, and also at that point, will you have started to get bids to know percentage rates of what your interest, so that we can have a.
I'm sure we'll have some idea.
At least some offers?
We'll have some.
Okay, I think that's reasonable, and.
We have three readings, that's six weeks.
Okay.
So I have plenty of time.
Okay, and when I'm asking for, I'm asking for the actual documentation of the amount and what acreage is buildable and what is unbuildable, um, which is, is realistic. And then another concern that I had as a citizen is, you're also purchasing and taking this for a piece of property that actually has pieces that are not, there's going to be large sections that are unbuildable because they're owned by other citizens of the community. So what's the plan, is that plan in place on how you're going to deal with those pieces?
They get to keep their property.
Yeah, we're not taking pieces of property that don't belong to us.
Yeah.
No, I, I knew that, but.
Yeah, but.
If you're purchasing it, those are things, again, to make sure that it's buildable.
We're not purchasing property that, that isn't part of that particular project.
No, but it, it does interfere with the actual plan of where you're going to lay and you're proposing building.
That's why they're given a public hearing.
So.
To make their concerns known, but.
No, I, I'm, my concern is that is the property buildable, and is it a good investment for the community to purchase a piece of property? Can it really, can it really serve the purpose that the community is hoping that it will? Or will these other properties, like, are we making a purchase assuming that maybe down the line, we might be able to buy this other piece of property?
No.
That jags out in front of it?
No.
So that it can be built with the purpose that we have.
No.
Assumed.
Nope.
Okay.
I, I'd like to add one thing real quick.
Mr. Tousley?
Something was said by Mr. Messner that, um, just because I, I understand how this works, there's a lot of confusion. He said there would be six weeks, but if we do a reading tonight, there's actually only, I think, three weeks, because that first reading will be tonight, and then next week will be the second, and then skip two weeks. So just for clarity, I, I don't want you to come back and say, "Wait a minute, five weeks, okay." I just want to make it clear that you don't think someone was trying to mislead you.
Okay, thank you.
Could you please please sign in?
Yes.
Any further comments or questions?
I guess, Carrie, did you get her questions, or does she need to write them down?
Well, it's being taped.
Okay.
Well, do, but do you have them?
But I'll check it.
Yeah, and anyone that has their questions all previously written.
That would help her.
You would give the, well, actually, they're supposed to do that, they should be giving any of those copies to the clerk, so that way we get everything straight.
And we don't miss nothing.
And it will be attached to the official minutes.
Yeah.
All right, are there any other comments regarding ordinance 51? We had a motion in a second to add this to tonight's special meeting for a first reading only. Clerk call the roll, please.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Letter G, Barberton Jail Agreement, Mr. Tousley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is something the administration's been working on for quite a while now, actually. This would be an agreement with the, with the city of Barberton to, um, jail Norton's prisoners for 16,753 dollars per year, and, correct me if I'm wrong, that's less what we've already put in.
That's, that's right, so there'll be, the amount that we paid for keeping the jail open for the week is credited against this amount.
Which was 3,000 plus.
3,200-ish.
Yes.
Change.
Okay. So, um, at the time, this was very important. Is this still really important, or do we just need a reading tonight? Just a reading tonight? Okay, so I would like to make a motion at this time to add ordinance 52, 2019, to tonight's special meeting for a first reading, and with emergency language.
Mr. McLone?
Yes. I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to add, um, ordinance 52, 2019, to the special tonight for a first reading. Is there any further discussion regarding the, uh, agreement or the ordinance? Clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Tousley?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Letter H, small wireless facilities, Mr. Gainer?
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is concerning the, uh, 5G communications wireless that'll be one day, soon, probably This is concerning the five G communications wireless that'll be one day soon probably installed on our facilities around the city, poles and new poles. This is something that needs to be done almost immediately because, Justin, did you come up with the date on that, or?
Uh, yeah, it's this week, so...
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's pretty soon. So the, the FCC has put in regulations, they're trying to, they're allowing cities to have reasonable design guidelines, and I apologize, Mr. Gaynor, he did point this out a couple weeks ago, and I, not that I ignored him, I just didn't get to it in time. So they are allowing cities that pass legislation essentially by tonight, Tax Day, happy day for us, that if you have reasonable design guidelines in place as of tonight, which is me tonight, then those are allowed to stay in place. If you don't have design guidelines in by tonight, then moving forward, you can't put new design guidelines. So this ordinance you have before you is an ordinance that a number of communities have adopted for these small cell wireless facilities, you know, and we never want to be the test case for legal challenges, so to my knowledge, these have not been challenged in court, but a number of communities last year in particular, when the state of Ohio sort of tried to preempt everybody, put these types of regulations in place, so this is mod on that. It's just to get a placeholder in place, if we need to come back and modify them later, we can do that, but I would recommend that you get something in place tonight, just to have it on the books.
And that was going to be my question, if we put something in place tonight, i-is that like a placeholder where we can come back later and modify?
Yeah, I think you could always make it, you probably couldn't make it more restrictive going forward, I think you could probably make it looser going forward, right?
Okay.
But at least it's something.
Okay.
Better than nothing.
Right.
I'd like to make the motion to move it to tonight's agenda.
Waving.
Second and third readings, please.
Yes, and waive second and third readings.
ER, emergency.
With emergency language, yes, I think it's in there. Does that mean, that's you?
Me? I don't know. No, yes, I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to add ordinance fifty-three, twenty nineteen, to tonight's special meeting, waiving second and third readings with emergency language. Is there any further discussion? Make sure, okay. With clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Letter I, Part-Time Police Officer, Non-Bargaining Hourly Rates, Ordinance Fifty-four, twenty nineteen, Mr. McLoone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, our, our part-time police officers are lower paid than other communities, and I think it was time for the job they do to increase their hourly salary. It's kind of hard, I was talking to chief today, to try to get someone in here as a part-time policeman when other communities are paying just a little bit more, and it's, and the proposed wages I was, we were asking for, if it was less than one year of completed service, they'd make eighteen sixty-six an hour. After one year, it'd be twenty dollars and fifteen cents an hour. After ten years, twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents an hour. And after fifteen years of completed service, they'd make twenty-three fifty-one. And this would be retroactive as the first of the year. Any questions on that? Anybody? Okay, with that, I'd like to add that to tonight's special meeting for its first reading, ordinance fifty-four, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in a second to add ordinance fifty-four, twenty nineteen, to tonight's special meeting for first reading only. Is there any further discussion or comments? With clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. McLoone?
Yes.
Mr. Carratt?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Is there any other business to come before committee of the hall? Are there any topics for the next work session that we should make note of? All right, hearing done then, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, or adjourned. Moving on to the special council meeting. I now call a special council meeting for Monday, April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, to order. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. With clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes. Here. I'm sorry. Here.
Mr. Carratt?
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Pilot?
Mr. Pilot's excused.
Mr. Kernan?
Here. Under new business, committee of the hall, is there anything to come before committee of the hall? Moving on to introduction of new legislation, ordinance forty-six, twenty nineteen, Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. I introduce ordinance forty-six, twenty nineteen, for its first reading, ask clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance authorizing an agreement for property and casualty insurance and declaring an emergency.
As we need to get this done, it would be better to do it tonight, or we could do it next Monday. I've already said to waive second and third, but...
I, I'm fine waiving, if I think we need to get it done.
Okay, so if you read it for me, please?
She did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm busy talking. Okay, at this time, I motion to waive second and third reading.
I'll second that. Have a motion in a second to waive the second and third readings of ordinance forty-six, twenty nineteen. Is there any discussion regarding waiver? With clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. McLoone?
Yes.
Mr. Carratt?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
At this time, I make a motion to adopt ordinance forty-six, twenty nineteen.
I'll second that. I have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance forty-six, twenty nineteen. Is there any further discussion regarding the ordinance? With clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. McLoone?
Yes.
Mr. Carratt?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-seven, twenty nineteen, Mr. Carratt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to introduce ordinance forty-seven, twenty nineteen, for its first reading, ask the clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance providing consent to the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding the project designated as PID one zero seven one six five and declaring an emergency.
It's first reading only.
Thank you. Ordinance forty-eight, twenty nineteen, Mr. McLoone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer ordinance forty-eight, two thousand nineteen, for its first reading, ask clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance determining to amend the certain non-bargaining unit salary rates and wages and declaring an emergency.
First reading only.
Thank you. We're going to skip ordinance forty-nine because that's going on for its first reading next week, so we'll be at ordinance fifty, twenty nineteen. Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. This time, I introduce ordinance fifty, twenty nineteen, for its first reading, ask clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of real property from the Board of Park Commissioners of Summit Metro Parks and declaring an emergency.
First reading only.
Thank you, Ms. Whipke. Ordinance fifty-one, twenty nineteen, Ms. Whipke?
I introduce ordinance fifty-one, twenty nineteen, for its first reading, ask clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars of notes of the city of Norton in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of acquiring real property for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
First reading only.
Thank you. Ordinance fifty-two, twenty nineteen, Mr. Towesley?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I offer ordinance number fifty-two, two thousand nineteen, for its first reading, and ask the clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement for the boarding of prisoners with the city of Barberton and declaring an emergency.
And that's first reading only.
Ordinance fifty-three, twenty nineteen, Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, I'd like to offer fifty-three, twenty nineteen, for its first reading and waive the second and third.
So go ahead and just read it.
An ordinance enacting new chapter one zero seven two, small cell design guidelines of the Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code and declaring an emergency.
I'll second.
And Mr. Gaynor, you had moved to waive second and third readings?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and we have a motion in a second to waive the second and third readings. Is there any discussion regarding waiver? With clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. McLoone?
Yes.
Mr. Carratt?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, make a motion to adopt, please.
I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance fifty-three, twenty nineteen. Is there any discussion regarding the ordinance? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. McLoone?
Yes.
Mr. Carratt?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Ordinance fifty-four, twenty nineteen, Mr. McLoone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer ordinance fifty-four, two thousand nineteen, for its first reading, ask clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance to amend the non-bargaining hourly wages for part-time police officers and declaring an emergency.
First reading only.
Thank you. Ordinance forty-two, twenty nineteen, Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer ordinance forty-two, twenty nineteen, for its second reading, ask clerk to read it, please.
An ordinance to amend the appropriations for the current expenses of the city of Norton for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, authorizing transfers from the general fund for calendar year two thousand nineteen and declaring an emergency.
I was under the impression you needed to get this done so you could get the books caught up. Mr. Towesley, last time we had it before, you didn't want to do it because of Exhibit